Do we have, we need you, we need Michelle. Jason's gonna be running late probably. Yeah. We have Commissioner Hartman, we have Brian.
Mayor, just before we start the meeting, I wanted to take this chance to introduce our newest Assistant City Attorney. This is Shay McCurdy. You come on up.
Hello Shay.
She's spent six years at FDLE and six years at the State Attorney's Office, and she's been with us for about a week and a half now. So I wanted you all to be able to put a face with a name.
Alright. Really, yeah, half a face with a name, yeah.
Half your face.
Alright.
Thanks Shay.
Thank you Shay, welcome. Look forward to working with you. Okay, so with that, we will call this meeting to order. If you would call the roll, please.
Commissioner Colodey.
Here.
Commissioner Hartman.
Here.
Commissioner McGurk. Vice Mayor Sax.
Here.
Mayor Owen.
Here. Do we need to excuse him from this? He'll be here late, so we don't have to do an excuse, right?
Yeah, it's regular meetings that it's most important.
Okay, got it.
He's not an IT guy anyway, so.
Yeah, right. Yeah, we don't want him voting on the, or considering that thing. Okay, so as I explained to the few members of the public here, this is not a regular meeting. This is just a workshop, so there will be no decisions or actions taken today. This is just informational purposes. We hold a series of these throughout the year in preparation for the budget. One thing we noticed at one of my first budget workshops was we had like an hour to go through a $70 million budget with a ton of different departments and there were way too many questions. So we developed this series of things to be able to just kind of take bite-sized chunks at the budget, getting a deeper dive on different departments. And so we go through this series of these and then leading to July when we actually kick off the formal budget process, where we're actually approving things. So this is all just information. With that, we will have public participation, if there are any. Seeing none, we'll close that. And we'll have, who wants to go first? IT's first, alright.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, alright. Glad to see you guys. So this is the Information Technology Budget Workshop, or Mini Budget Workshop for fiscal year 22. Little overview, we have 16 sites, 310 users, computer users, 420 computers, 78 servers, 18 are physical, 60 virtual, 263 handset phones at the desks, 78 network printers, 111 network video cameras, 125 cellphones, and 50 tablets. This year's accomplishments, the Brannon Center AV upgrade that has allowed us to, the audio upgrade, the microphones, to be able to broadcast to Granicus, those kind of things.
Do the computers in the, like patrol cars and other things, is that in that number?
Yes.
Okay.
It is.
Just trying to reconcile why we have more computers than people. And that's probably it.
Yeah.
Because you have some that have multiple.
Yes, yes.
And are you counting these kind of devices as computers?
Those are under the tablets.
Okay.
Section.
Got it.
And then there's common area computers, that kind of stuff.
Yeah, okay.
We're also streaming now with Granicus, the commission meetings. In the Babe Jaffe Center, we replaced the Wi-Fi. And with replacing the Wi-Fi there, we also switched out a circuit that gave us a savings of about $1,100 a month. At the sports complex, in the press box, we now have a wireless connection to the press box that allows internet connectivity up there for events, for people who are in the press box. We have been working with the UC on a fiber project that will come to you later this evening for approval to start our partnership with them for a fiber sharing agreement that will initially connect four of our locations and eventually connect all of our locations. We did our FDLE audit. Haven't heard back from that audit yet, but we did spend some time on that, and that was lots of fun. Supported work from home, upgraded our Skype to Microsoft Teams. So it was really nice how well we were able to support people working from home. Shortly, the City Hall Annex Project. We've been working toward it. We have about another four to six weeks of, and our part of it is right here at the end as parts come, pieces come together. Integrating cameras, all the AV equipment in the commission chambers, and all the computers, network connectivity, Wi-Fi, that kind of stuff. And shortly, they'll be, we have budgeted money to replace servers and storage. I'll be presenting that sometime in June for approval. Next year's objectives. Our upgrade from our current office application to Officer 65's version of the desktop client. An increase to our internet bandwidth to help support more and more online applications. It will also enable us to do some off-site backups of our data. Continue reviewing and implementing cybersecurity best practices. Remote backup and disaster recovery site is one of the things that I have budgeted for, so we can have an active off-site backup instead of just a air-gapped version of it. Implementing redundant firewalls that have newer technologies to protect us against threats. And if one fails, we have another that will take its place. Register and implement city-owned IP address space. Right now, we get those from the service provider. So if we ever want to switch to a different service provider, we have to get new addresses. And if we have our own addresses, the transition is seamless in that process. Configure network and connect sites with the fiber that we're working with the UC with. We have some modules with Tyler that we need to assist departments in implementing. Executime, inventory and asset management. Central IT purchasing and software renewals. There's a need for IT to kind of be in the process more than we are now. I'm finding that there's things that slip through the cracks. So us taking care of more of that stuff will be better. And working with the UC on a fiber expansion roadmap. They have a large project that they're doing that requires a lot of fiber. And there's a third-party vendor consultant that they're bringing in soon. And I'm gonna be working with them to help with where's the best places so we can get our connectivity into the network. Budget. This year's budget with our, in our budget, there were some capital items that, the computer replacement. So our budget plus the computer replacement items equal to about $1 million. Our staffing is 5.5 positions. For next year, I'm requesting an additional systems administrator. It'll complement our existing one that supports Tyler and Intergov. It'll allow business continuity for those applications. And it'll help implement the modules that I spoke about earlier, the Executime, inventory and asset management. And this will be funded like the other position, which is 60% from the building department. Also, a part-time administrative specialist. And that would be responsible for IT purchasing for all departments. Software and telecommunications needs, entering requisitions, handling purchase orders, and then reconciling and paying invoices. Operating, some of the increases this year will be for the Officer 65 upgrade. Additional backup software licensing to allow for the remote backup. The security awareness training, the renewal for that is coming this year. Where it got paid last year as a new initiative. The remote disaster recovery site, the internet speed increase, and the IP registration service. Those are the notable increases outside of the typical 3%, 5% uplifts of maintenance. And then capital, the firewall upgrade replacement is $30, or $30,000 for two firewalls. And their services, you know, the hardware itself isn't as expensive. It's all the services that come along with it for the security. It goes out and checks, you know, websites for malicious activity and fingerprints information as it comes through. Any questions, comments?
Questions for Thomas, or comments? Mike?
The one part-time position, the one part-time position you're looking for. Seems to me a lot of that data entering and everything is more directed towards the finance department.
It's still responsibilities that we have in our department. The entering requisitions and the, all the maintenance items that need to be paid for and bought is things that we're doing in our department.
Was it always done that way?
Yes.
That's pretty typical too, in Mike's experience.
Okay. That's it.
Okay.
Until you're done with your presentation, then you have to come over here for a computer problem.
No problem.
I figure if anyone's gonna fix it, it's you.
Any other questions or comments?
So a total of one and a half new personnel, then?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, well, actually, if you look at the administrative system administrator, that's 60% by the building department.
Yeah.
So in reality, really, you only have probably one.
Is that a continual added billing fund, or is it just a one-year?
Yeah, right now, I think we have another position that is being paid either half or full by the building department. They're spending quite a few time from IT staff.
Right.
On their software and on their computers, equipment, and other equipment that they have, so.
Okay.
But that's a continued thing.
Okay.
So the building department is slowly taking over the whole city, or at least 60% of everything. Which leads me to a whole other, I mean, I don't know how it works here. We had, in higher education budgeting, we had, literally just escaped me, but basically like a shared cost system where you'd go through. And so we could burden every grant or contract with a certain rate, like a certain, you know, burden rate. You just say, look, out of everything that goes on in the university, we're burdening this amount to research. And so every research grant paid, you know, 30%, I forget the exact number. Whatever the percentage was of indirect cost and cost recovery. I don't know what the model is in cities, it's, you know, for you all. We don't have to debate it today, but just something to think about if we're not doing is try, rather than trying to take this kind of position by position and saying 60% of this one and 20% of that one. And, you know, like, I don't know if there's a city equivalent to that kind of indirect cost recovery model and just say, let's charge this to the building fund. Because you gotta imagine, you know, a certain percent of, I mean, our salary, his salary, like, a lot of this stuff should really be cross-billed to building. Maybe it is, I don't know. Do you, if you can answer it quickly, go ahead.
So if it's a direct, like, we're, the IT person is actually in the building department helping out, it's a direct that we can charge to building funds? There is, but I think the overall overhead indirect, like legal services, HR and things, and that there is a general overhead transfer from building to cover those.
Okay, so we already, we do that?
We're doing it.
Is that like a study? Do we, how do we calculate that or compute that number?
I defer to finance as far as how they arrive at that.
Alright.
But there's a general fund transfer, has to be proportionate to our burden on those overhead services.
Okay. So I'd love to, we'll talk about it later. Because in our case, we, you had to do that ever so often to make sure it's still current and you have backup for it, etc. So, and I imagine it'll be the same here. Couple more things. The part-time position, something to think about. Is that the type of position that could sit at the front desk and also buzz people through a door while they're doing that job, or not? And you don't have to answer it today, just something to think about. Good work on the know-before, the security awareness training. I'd love to see stats on that eventually, like, it's just to see that we're making progress. And people aren't clicking the links that they probably were clicking when we first started that program.
Yes.
You know, in my experience, like, we were, it felt like, from my anecdotal data points, that we were pretty far behind as an organization. And so I hope that we're making, you know, some great strides on that. Most, some of you may not know, one of my first paychecks actually did not make it to meet because of a lack of training in this particular area, which led to this know-before. On the fiber projects, is that something that eventually residents or businesses would, will be able to access as well? Like, how big is that? Is that just for us and the UC?
It would be just municipality only.
Okay.
When you start becoming a service provider, it gets really murky. And especially, everything I hear from the UC, because at once upon a time, they were
I got it.
Trying to be a service provider.
Okay.
They don't even want anybody to say that they're even gonna try to do that again.
And that's probably a UC question too. I just didn't know if you knew the answer, and that's the answer.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
The UC have tried this probably about 10, 15 years ago. I don't know if you recall, but they were providing cable service as well as internet. So, but then they ran into some other issues that...
Yeah, I missed that. The purchasing, I completely agree that that should be routed through you. We went through a similar transition in previous organization. And purchasing is your stopgap on that. Like, they have to, you know, if we submitted a PO that had anything techno, you know, technology on it, even down to like iPad-type purchases, purchasing would just automatically route it for an IT signature. Like, they had to sign off on everything. And if we hadn't called IT beforehand, it was way slower. So we all learned eventually, just go to IT, work with them, make sure you meet the spec. Certain things, you know, IT placed the order directly. Certain things you could buy yourself, but you had to make sure you bought off of the spec sheet to, you know, so you don't deal with, you know, it's version control, it's hardware control, it's all those kind of things. So I like the direction you're headed there. The last question is, you know, we've been in the news with the pipeline lately, and you and I have talked about this briefly before, but, you know, the question is not if you're vulnerable, it's just kind of how vulnerable. I've contended, you know, 98% of the stuff we deal with is all kind of public information. So we're not, we're not, we're not running risk of like a data breach, like a typical Equifax data breach, where it's like sensitive information's getting out. But how vulnerable are we to an attack like that where they kind of lock up the city and say, you know, all of a sudden, we can't do policing, or we can't do, you know, what are the critical systems we need to maintain and stay online? I mean, obviously, the UC is its own entity, which is probably where 90% of those critical systems are. But have we done an analysis on like, what do we need to make sure? I mean, if my email stops working, I can live for a while. But if our officer's system shuts down, or the fire system shuts, you know, what are those critical systems and how vulnerable are they?
So I would say probably one of the biggest one is to be able to pay people and to get paid. So our munis system, that is hosted in the cloud.
Okay.
In their data center.
Okay.
So that I feel pretty comfortable with.
Yeah.
On public safety side, that is a Volusia County side of things. So it's just, we supply the connectivity to get to the county.
Okay.
So if we ever had an issue, it would either just be bringing that connection back up, which is usually outside of a ransomware.
Yeah.
Because that's usually locking servers up.
Yeah.
So that shouldn't be an issue. And usually, every time I hear or talk to police and fire, they're like, we can still do our jobs. It's more painful.
Yeah, it'd be a headache, but it wouldn't grant everything to all.
Correct.
Okay. So really, it sounds like our vulnerability is relatively low.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then our email system is hosted in the cloud with Officer 65. So our exposure internally is lower than
Yeah.
Other places are, where your whole financial system is located in-house and on your own SQL servers.
Yeah.
So, yes.
And again, there's very little of any proprietary data. I mean, you know, the email system, one of the big threats in that space is releasing of the data on the email system.
Yeah.
Corporate sabotage, espionage-type stuff.
Yeah.
Anybody can literally send one email and get all of my emails.
Yes.
It's like, that's not a huge risk for us.
Yeah.
So, okay. Anything else? Alright. Thank you all.
Thank you.
I think Commissioner Colodey needed you. And actually, I could use the Wi-Fi password for the Brannon Center if somebody had it too. Mine's not working, but. Alright, Michelle, you're up.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Michelle Valance, Capital Projects Manager. I hope you have your magnifying glasses. You do have a hard copy in front of you. And what that is, is page one represents the current request for projects that have been submitted by the various departments for next fiscal year. Many of these have already been presented to you at various workshops. So we're in collection mode of getting these requests ironed out, trued up, and again, back to you at a later date here. So this is a draft. Just again, with the paper you have in front of you, the pages behind page one are projects that are currently funded in a design, bid, award, or construction phase.
Wow.
So the focus is the top sheet, and we are here to answer questions on anything else that's currently underway as well.
And so these, none of these are new requests today? These are all things that have come before, like he just had, you know, whatever projects he had, that would already be in this, in this list? And some of these I am recognizing from other presentations?
Yes, there is a caveat. There's one or two of them that are gonna be rebudgeted. So I'd love to go line by line, if you guys are okay with that? I'll try to be brief.
Sure, yeah, we have a little time.
Just high-level, there's 18 items on this page. And something to note is, majority of them are projects that are replacement or renovation in nature. I just kind of think that's an interesting thing for us to be aware of, that there's six or seven that are either new construction or assets that we would be acquiring. So we are in replacement renovation mode with things we currently own. Okay, so first up, the top two lines are new requests from the golf course. Again, they're requesting a garage workshop, again, to help give more maintenance space for their assets, as well as an outdoor pole barn for overhead protection of existing equipment. Third, fourth, and fifth line item are requests for work to be done at the maintenance operations location, address 124 Industrial. This is the big one you saw at Maintenance Ops' presentation. This is the relocation of Smith Street to this facility, which includes, you know, a whole host of scope of work to demo an existing facility on that site, build a new one that's two times its size, again, to take on our staff from downtown out to the airport. It also includes a addition of solar panels on this new proposed structure. We did get this request, the estimated cost for those from the University of Central Florida as our basis. And the third thing they'll be doing on that site is replacing their existing roof over the office admin building that's in need of repair.
Michelle, let's just point out that the $500,000 for the relocation is already included in the first bank note that we had. The $300,000 for the solar system, I have asked Mark Galvin at tonight's meeting to show that if the commission wishes to include in the bank note number two. So that one is not clearly at this point, there is no funding at all for that one.
I'm sorry, there's not item numbers here for me to point you quickly to, but line item six is the I-95 and State Road 44 landscape improvements. That's additional scope of landscaping requested for that project that's currently under design. Item seven, Barracuda Boulevard, this is just the roadway improvement, not part of the bridge work that you've seen for, you know, quite some time now. This is completely new scope from the traffic signal to the base of the bridge. Line below that, we start to get into some of our parks and playgrounds here, replacing basketball goals at 27th Avenue. They're in disrepair due to the location, being there on the beach. Item below that would be at our new splash park that we have. It's adjacent to the existing playground that has mulch. The request here would be to put artificial turf in that area, which makes a great candidate for a CDBG grant application. So that is currently being looked at because the grant cycle for next year has opened up. I know Irma Terry's reached out and is gonna take that one forward, hopefully with a grant. Item 10 below that is the skate park expansion, demoing the current building and coming back in with a much larger, robust building for use of offices, restrooms, and a skate ramp. The next three items down are all for the sports complex, replacing the pump house for irrigation, LED field lights, which we've, again, talked about prior, at prior meetings, which makes a great ECHO grant candidate. And then the third, sports complex, is a track replacement.
And Mayor, just to, the 1.6 million and the 400,000, I mean, that's probably based on this coming budgets. I mean, I haven't seen the final numbers, but I doubt that we'll be able to do that on this year's budget unless if you finance otherwise.
Okay, so leaving the sports complex, we have some money in here again for some sidewalk replacement in Historic West Side through the CDBG program. Below that, Women's Club is back on this list with a new update to share. This particular project has, in the current year, 535,000 budgeted. We received great news and hopefully maintains that course of an additional funding initiative, local initiative from the state of Florida, which would provide an additional 600,000 to our current...
Did you see the News Journal article today?
Today, no, I did not.
You saw it.
Oh, wait, yes. The key word, Thanksgiving.
Some tax watchdog has come out and called this a Turkey project.
A Turkey, yes, I saw that, sorry.
And my response would be that they should, I'll let them be there when the place, when we have to tear it down because it's falling apart, and they can tell the citizens that this is the oldest building in our city's a turkey, so.
Yes. So just to hang there for a moment, we acknowledge the challenge of that project and the beauty of it at the same time. And wanting to do the right thing, plan twice, build once. Scope has changed, costs has gone up. We've been a victim of that for the last two years here. And we're ready to pull this trigger and get out of this swirl that we've been in. And with GLA Architects, though it's good news that there's this state grant available, the challenge that we have found ourselves is, from the original scope, it was to handle, from a foundation perspective, was to deal with the four corners of the square. The building's a square in general, is shore up the building and handle the four corners. Well, now to bring the building up to code and do it right the first time, we have to replace the entire building foundation. That's all, that's been shared with you guys at prior meetings. We now have an estimate from GLA Architects of what that may cost in today's world. And they are putting in writing that it is $1 million just for the foundation. Tough news to handle, I think, for this project. Right thing to do, we need to get a little further to true up that number. But right now, in a concept phase, they are saying it's $1 million for the entire foundation. So...
So that would, just using round, that's in addition to, let me ask it this way.
Yeah.
So all-in, based on everything you know today, forget sources of funding, just the check you would have to write to do it right from the ground up, reopen the building, is, what's that all-in number? I know it's a best guess of today's time.
Right, so all we know now, our last time we came to you guys was, don't let the building fall down. I hate to say it that way, but, so we have to fix the legs. We have to deal with the foundation. And what's been exhausting the last few months is deciding... And what's been exhausting the last few months is deciding where that breakpoint is. Where do you, how can you go in, swipe the feet out of something, and find a good stopping point to come catch the rest at a later date, meaning the walls, the windows, the roof, and strap it all together? So what we know today is just the foundation is one million dollars based on GLE Architects' estimate and discussions with their structural engineers and subconsultants. So the all-in number to get all the way to the roof, we haven't gotten there yet.
So the six, let me ask it differently then. The six hundred thousand dollar before, that was just the foundation still, or was that?
No, it's, it's gone up and we got more money. That more money is fixing a problem we already had. So we're at one point one now with the six hundred and the five thirty-five, and that's all going to the foundation. So there will be another phase behind this to really do what we set out to do two years ago.
How much did it cost to build the Live Oak Cultural Center?
Two point two. And that was in, what, two thousand eighteen?
Yeah, I mean, construction costs are different, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the bottom line, we had in the budget five thirty-something, and then minus the seventy thousand for the design.
Correct.
So, four hundred and say seventy for some, plus the six hundred, that gives you the million fifty.
Correct.
And that would not be the total amount to make the building complete, so.
It's just the foundation.
Is about a million, which is, it seems like an awfully high, high cost, but we went back to them three times, and they kept saying they're sticking to the number.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I guess it's going to go out to bid anyway, I mean, regardless, so.
Yeah.
I believe in that. I mean, it's easier to, to build a foundation on, when there's not a building on top of it. Yeah, like, that's the worst way to build a foundation, is when you've already put buildings on it.
Still, I think it's, it just, it seems like it's a pretty high number, but I guess when we bid it out, and, and, you know, unfortunately, with the construction prices going down and, and materials, so.
Yeah.
So, in order to keep that one going, again, we need to get it into the next phase. We need to release GLE to go begin drawing and defining and fine tuning and updating, and then put it out to bid, and we really, I think, will have a better feel for where we go from here. So, that's all we have on the Women's Club for today. If you have any questions, we can absolutely answer them. Three more on the list. For next year, since we will be moving into the City Hall annex building, we will be in there very soon. There's also a desire to do some improvements in the existing City Hall. I don't know if Colton, you want to kind of mention that, but.
I would not call it improvement, but I would call it as a
Reconfigure.
Kind of revise the floor planning. For example, we have the assistant city attorneys upstairs financed looking for extra space. So we might be doing some changes in the first floor to be able to relocate the assistant city attorney down and have some more space, because obviously we're having some additional staff, so.
Right.
So I'll be bringing the, kind of like a revised floor plan and, and share it with the commission probably at one of the briefings, when, when we have it complete.
Yeah.
So this estimate for that particular scope is not, not the, the cost to move code enforcement over. So we are converting the chambers into the future code enforcement office space, which will be funded by the building fund. That's not on this list. This is all cap, you know, capital funds account.
And that relocation, just, we will have partitions in the commission chamber, which we used to have offices there at some point. So hopefully we'll create maybe seven, eight offices with a small conference room. And there'll be partitions for them, so.
Okay. And then the last two here for the Marina, the Marina restroom renovation, that one will be rebudgeted. We, you know, put that one back out. We put that one out to bid. We only received one bid. It was unfortunate that project, the bid was rejected. We did add some scope. There was a desire to put in a deck expansion for the folks that live there in a space that makes really great sense, so we think that'll kind of draw a bit more of the general contracting crowd now that the, the scope is a bit more, I guess, conducive, long-term project and not just a bathroom repair. And last but not least, we do need to plan for next year's dock repairs at the Marina, based on an assessment that was performed to the existing docks on-site, and get ahead of that. So all in all, of those eighteen, if you total the column on the estimate, all in, no grants, no loan, it's four point nine million dollars for new projects requested for next year.
And the Marina, just to note, on the Marina project, that will be coming out of the Marina Fund they have in their fund reserve, probably to cover this improvement and repair to the dock system that they have. They don't have the floating docks on all their slips, so that's one of them, and then they had a diver go in, probably about two, three months ago, to inspect the bracing and the piling, so there is some, some safety issue there that needs to be addressed as well.
The Marina Fund has like six hundred and thirty thousand right now.
Yeah.
So that's good. Are we, do we have any projects that are R and R type projects that we are borrowing money to fund? Outside of the bridges, which I know about, but are any other more routine R and R projects that we are borrowing money to fund?
You have the, the five hundred thousand for the maintenance operation. And then if you approve the bank notes with the list on it today for the six hundred thousand for the, for the Women's Club, and the three hundred thousand dollars for the solar system, that would be under the bank note as well.
Okay.
And then the two fifty for the Barracuda Boulevard from the bottom of the, well, the, the base of the bridge to the traffic lights. I think we increased the amount of the bank notes previously, if you recall, and I think there is enough money there possibly to do that two fifty. But I have to double check on that, but I think it's, there's a possibility there. So, these lists of the one I just gave you, they're already, either they will be included in the bank note, or they're already included.
Yeah. Just from a sustain, it's just probably something to keep an eye on for, for staff is paying for any kind of R and R type thing out of, having to borrow money to pay for R and R makes, that, that's not sustainable over the long term. Ideally, you pay for, you know, we, we bond something or take a, a note on something when it's kind of new infrastructure or something that we think over time, we will be able to pay off, and then by the time it becomes an R and R, we'll have ongoing revenues from taxes or user fees or whatever to, to pay for that. So, these are a bit of some anomalies. We've got a couple of bridges, the Maintenance Ops. relocation, you could argue that's kind of, I mean, that building is basically at its end of life, so you're really doing a new whole, a whole building, so.
Well, on that one too, Mayor, on the one on Smith Street, I mean, if you either lease or you sell the property, you have revenue coming from that one. And then the six hundred thousand for the Women's Club, that will be offset by the state grant.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, other comments? I have a few other, but any other comments, questions for Michelle? Go ahead.
On the Marina bathroom project, wasn't there already money in this year's budget for that?
Yes, and it would be carried forward to next year.
How much was that?
It was sixty-five.
Okay, so you're saying we need a hundred and twenty plus sixty-five?
No, it'd be sixty-five plus fifty-five.
Okay.
So just re-budget the whole project at one twenty.
One twenty would be the total.
That's, yeah.
So, so the only new cost would be the fifty-five, then?
And with the increased fees we're going to charge, we could. Other questions, comments on the, for Michelle? So on, later on tonight's agenda, at the, at the next meeting, one of the consent agenda items is a, is a position to help Michelle, and I just point your attention to pages two, three, and four of this. Those are all the projects that are in progress, spread all over the forty-nine square miles of New Smyrna in various stages of array or disarray, depending on the project. So if you have, if you have a question as to, you know, what the need of that is, now might be a time to, to drill in on that, but I'd point you to those pages, just kind of the, the justification for that. And, and Capital Projects, one of those things, we all want them to, they're highly visible at one point, and that is the minute that we go there to cut a ribbon. And then it's kind of, all eyes are on them, and we expect them to be perfect at that moment, so we, we have to make sure we're investing all along the, the way, because you know, that's, that's when we want it to be perfect, and Michelle can't be in all places at all times, so. Couple of the comments on the, the artificial turf. Let's bring that up on one of our calls. Let's just make sure that's something, I, I don't want to have another, I want to make sure that demand is coming from the community versus the, the other direction, so.
Two concerns, is that one, one of them, and then the actual cost for it. I mean, that's.
Yeah, I know, that's, that's a lot.
But I, I.
Before I go cut a ribbon and say, hey, here's where we spent a hundred K, I just want to make sure we've got at least a little bit of support, and there's not somebody saying, well, hey, if you'd just spent five K on this issue, we could, we'd have really loved you, and yet you spent a hundred K over here, so.
Fully agree there.
Yeah. So, that was, I think, all that I have. Any others? Okay. I thought Carrie wanted to speak, but I think she's, I think she's wishing she was on a sailboat over there. You kind of zoned out on me there for a minute. All right. If that is it. Anything else? Okay.
Any questions on any of the, the projects that we have already, any, I think we included in the CM report an update status on all the projects. So if you have any questions, I think this is the time to, to ask if, because Michelle is here, and we could answer them.
If I could jump in, I have one probably that's worth talking about.
Sure. Let me say one before I forget it, if you can remember your thing.
Sure.
The, the track, I get that we're probably not going to be able to fund that, and that's a, that's a wish at this point, but I mean, I've spent some time on it. I did the police fitness thing over there. We were there with the, when the governor was in town. I, I mean, it's probably becoming almost like a safety issue. It's really, really rough. I don't know if this number, you know, it, it seems like there's a coating on top, and I'm not a track specialist, but it seems like there's something on top, and then there's kind of under, underlayment, so I don't know if we can just do, is there anything we can do to buy us a couple of years while we get this in the budget, or I, I feel like if not, at some point, we're going to have to basically do a use at your own risk type situation, because it genuinely is, is rough. I wouldn't want my student athlete on that track. It's getting pretty rough. I don't know if the school uses it as a track, or is it just as a walking track at this point? Does anybody know?
It's the track, and it's been like that for quite some time, and every time it's the cost who keeps putting it off.
Yeah.
So, I know there was a.
So does the school use it as a track?
Excuse me?
Does the school use it as their, as their track, or they have their own track?
They, they, they use it, and they always complain about it, and I know one time we had a tournament, this was about maybe six, seven years ago, and we were looking at the cost at the time, I think it was two fifty.
Yeah.
It's always been the cost that it's been preventing from.
Yeah.
But they use it, I think.
Do you think they would chip in on it?
Excuse me?
Will they chip in on it? I don't know. All right. Go ahead, Michelle.
I'm sorry, I, 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 we have, we, we do need to talk about this one, and it's not on your top sheet because we're recommending holding, and it's the old Fort Wall. So we came to you all in March with the update on that project of where it fell financially. And we gave you three options of the design, and we showed you, we have a design A, B, and C. Ones were store in place, more or less with two different approaches. And the, the alternate was, unfortunately, take it down, build a new wall, and put the cocaine on as a veneer. You, you unanimously supported sticking with our original intent to repair that wall in place for the nostalgic and historic, you know, approach. That yielded an estimate of nine hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, which is unbudgeted, unfunded. So we recommended to you all, and you again, supported it, to rescind the grant that we had with the county. We put that in writing with the county, and we went to the Echo Board two weeks ago and shared that unfortunate news with them. And our intent, again, was to reapply. It still is to reapply for the Echo with a higher request to support the project. Engineering has been measuring the wall monthly and reporting no movement. So given, given the dollar value and the lack of movement that's being, you know, documented, being that there's a wish list here, our suggestion would be to hold until perhaps a movement or activity starts to present itself. Not sure if.
The, we had state funding for that one as well, also, right?
No, we just had Echo. That one didn't get the state funding.
It didn't? I thought I literally read about it today.
Paper said we did.
Yeah.
We applied for the old Fort, but I don't believe it was.
I think we applied for both of them. I don't know, I have not heard that we got for the two. I think I heard about the Women's Club, the six hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we did apply through.
Because I'm with you, the pa, the article talks about both projects.
Yes, but that's, I, as far as I know, it's only just the Women's.
Right.
Okay.
So did Echo extend?
No, we, we rescinded, we returned the grant, so basically gave it back, right, and shared with them that we want to reapply. It's just when, you know, initially it was immediately, and now when we look at the list of projects to be funded, we, we need to see if it can fit in this year, or kind of hold the line and find a different approach. Any other grants that may be out there, we can certainly start running towards those. It's a funding challenge. The plans are ready to go.
We need a tourism fund. A fund of dollars that are earmarked for things like this, cultural, cultural and tourism, something, I don't know.
We'll try, I don't know. Well, we'll find out if there is any possibility.
So at that meeting, we talked about that. You also presented putting a fence up around the wall to help preserve it and to keep pedestrians away because of the safety issue.
Correct, so, yes, it was to put a guardrail up high on the wall, fifteen feet back from the edge, to keep folks from sitting on top of the wall.
Okay.
We're still trying to find that right fence. We've reached out to our local metal fabricator and want to do it tastefully, but don't want to break the bank either. You know, we heard, we heard the comments from the commission to, not that that be a permanent feature, but more a temporary in nature. But again, how long is temporary? So how appro, you know what I mean? It's kind of a, it's a tough one to do, and we've got a couple of styles that I'd love to, you know, get some input on if, if needed, necessary.
Michelle?
Yes.
Has anyone deemed it an imminent risk?
Not beyond what we've already documented. Yeah, we, we're aware of the cracks, locations, you know, the measurements, the depth, the width. There has not been anything further than, than those documentations.
Thanks.
Well, it, it kind of brings up an issue of why we need the fence. Obviously, it's been a, a, an obvious place where people like to sit, which we don't want them to sit. But the main reason we were contemplating putting up the fence was to keep weight off the top of the wall, so we don't cause it any more damage. But if we found out now, which I kind of thought it was, that there's no movement and there's no danger from that, really, why are we putting up a fence? You know, you, you have the hazard of people sitting on it, but then you have the hazard of everybody going into the ruin itself. So, I don't know whether we should, we should spend the money.
I, I wonder if, we also in the past year have not had any major events that drew large crowds. I know during the Christmas parade, you, you drive by that, and, I mean, that thing is just swarming. There's people, you know, tons of people on that. I imagine the same with Fourth of July. There will be, you know, troves of people that are, so, a lot more weight than just your, your, you know, family of five that just kind of walk on the wall. That's probably not going to make a measurable impact, but I worry about a lot of people on it at once, you know, if we see some, some movement in that case. I don't know.
Well, I would be more concerned about people sitting on it and falling off as to them doing any damage to the wall.
Yeah.
Because the way those people structurally isn't really going to affect that wall. What's going to affect the wall may go fall down, is you have a very heavy rain, and you build up water, and weight, and the soil weight is increased, and things become unstable. But if we have no indication that it's unstable now, people sitting on it is not going to cause it to fall over. You might want to try to prevent them from sitting on it, from falling off it, but
I mean, I would rather to. I mean, I would rather to, since we're monitoring the crack, to see if, if the crack or the wall has shifted slightly, then we could maybe put the fence up, because I don't want to put anything up there to disturb it at this point.
Yeah.
Correct.
So, that's, that's where we're struggling with, you know, if you put the fence up. I think what happened is the building official has suggested this or requested this. It's from a building standpoint, but it's a historic site, and it's been like that for a long time, so.
Okay. What was the action? Did we, did you need direction tonight on that?
On the old fort?
Yeah.
No, not that I'm aware of, just, that's more of an update of, you know, where we've been, where we're trying to go, and what we're going to recommend for next year's budget, that that one holds the line and is not included.
Well, I'm glad you brought it up, and I'm glad to hear we're monitoring it, because I did have that concern in the past.
Yeah.
So, good. Put the money on a different project and keep the fence up.
This Women's Center one is, is, to go back a bit, I mean, that's the one, that's a lot of money, and it's, am I right? Didn't you tell me at one point it's one of the, or if not the oldest like documented structure in our town, or one of, it's, it's right up there, right?
It's a nationally recognized landmark. It's not just a contributing structure, like the 214 is one inside the district, this is recognized all by itself.
Yeah.
So, it's important.
Which obviously carries a, a ton of weight, but, you know, this is the people's money. It's my tax dollars, your tax dollars, that's a lot of money in that building.
Yeah.
Even if we get it from some other source like the county or the state, there's still all my tax dollars, and so, I don't know, I just, that one's, one we, I, I don't know how, but I want to make sure we've kind of gotten the voice of the community, if you will, on, on that, because that's just a lot of money that could go towards, you know, a lot of other things. We got kids running track on something, they're going to break an ankle and ruin a career versus, you know, a building, so. But I also love old buildings, so.
Do we have a recommended use for the Women's Center?
My understanding is it would be maintained as it was in, since 1926, 1923, what did I say, 24 is what, is circa. It's always been a community center, so it's been a gathering place for events, and it's interesting to read kind of the write-up they did in the 80s about it and what it, you know, when they got it registered. It's, it's exactly the same here 40 years later.
So, it could be a small source of revenue as well?
Yeah, without knowing what the rental rates were. I know, you know, they rented it for weddings and, and whatnot, but I, I know at a much, you know, more.
I would.
Thanks.
An interesting data point I'm sure we have is just how, how often it was rented before and how much revenue was generated from that. I know you don't know it right now, I'm just saying, as we move forward, just to lace into this conversation, so.
Mr. Mayor, do you mind a quick question for Michelle?
Sure.
Michelle, have you had a chance to visit Manatee Riverside Park? I had several years ago a discussion with Faith about the condition of the sidewalks. Have you ever looked at it as, as a capital project?
No, I haven't, mm-mm. We can look at it, though.
Please, when you have time.
Okay.
Or maybe have your new staff member do that, but it might still be in disrepair.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Any others? All right, thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
For those of you that are joining, we're wrapping up a budget workshop, so this was focused on a couple of very specific items. You are no doubt probably here for the 6:30 meeting, which we will begin right at 6:30, and you'll be able to participate in that. So, I don't want you to hear me adjourning a meeting and think, oh, we missed it. So, you're in the right place, and you're at the right time, you're actually early, and you're, you're catching the tail end of yet another public meeting. So, with that, we will adjourn tonight's budget meeting and see you all back here at 6:30. Thank you.